... Because Mr. Moore is here and he's going to take our picture for the yearbook. So let's go up there and then we'll come back and we'll move into adjustments. So they're going to the library and we'll be right back. We have a new blue packet tonight. We'll be announcing the resignation and we have an additional policy. It's going to be for first week and we're actually going to delete Mrs. Lehman's presentation for the second time because her joint presenter was coming up from Portland and so we'll move that to the April meeting. So we'll go through that. So those are our adjustments. Okay, Wally, now you're number four.
A person's desiring to address the board. Last I looked, we didn't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Moving on. Board chair, I don't have anything. Do you have anything, Chair Hox?
I just want to welcome Jim. I saw him. Hi, Jim.
Hi.
Welcome. Sorry he couldn't make it last meeting but happy to have you at the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for volunteering.
Okay, so now we'll go to personnel. While they're resignations, I do want to announce publicly that I've accepted two resignations. First is Sue Sims, a faculty member of Hampden Academy. He's been with us 25-plus years. And also, Mydrick Earl, who is a person looking to move on to different ventures. So those resignations have been accepted. The nomination I had tonight, I'm also deleting because of other reasons of moving people around, so we'll act on that later. That was one of your agenda notes. And I think that should be, yeah. So now we'll get down to the superintendent schools meeting, essential behaviors and outcomes. Proclamation this evening is Wally.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibilities to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Wally. At this time, we're going to have a student presentation. Mr. Moore, you wanted to introduce our guest?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I am here tonight to introduce to you a very talented athlete, an incredible photographer, as you just noticed, and a very well-rounded student from Hampden Academy. Marcus Dunn is a senior who was given a challenge by myself and another person that he'll talk about here about a year ago to create a video that would showcase Hampden Academy and what it has to offer. The video that he will introduce and talk about is used in our recruitment process. It is, it's located on our webpage. And thanks to Marcus, I now have my own YouTube channel and it's the first hit on the YouTube channel now when you Google Hampden Academy. So I'm very proud to introduce Marcus Dunn.
First off, I just want to start off by saying thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. Like Mr. Moore said, Mr. Bisson approached us with this task. He had seen a recruitment video from Lincoln Academy that kind of sparked his interest. And his whole idea was to get one for Hampden to showcase what Hampden has to offer for outside of the district students that come in. And really just show off everything that Hampden has to kind of sell it to other schools and stuff like that. I was able to use the technology at Hampden Academy, which was really beneficial in making this project. We used the drones that Mr. Moore had at hand, the T-5I cameras to take all the videos and everything like that. It was a really fun project. Took us a little bit longer than I expected, but in the end, I think everything came out really well. There was a lot of hard work that went into it. There was a lot of people that were into it, Mr. Moore. I couldn't have done it without him with all his help. iMovie can be, can be pretty tough at times and he works really well with it, so that was good. And there was a lot of help from my other students, cooperation and stuff like that. So without further ado, I guess we'll take a look at it. I guess to close out, if you guys have any questions or comments or anything like that, I guess now would be the time.
Great job. Very nice job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
What was the most difficult part of putting it together?
Oh, the most difficult part of putting it together? I would probably say the most difficult part of putting that together. We had it about 95% complete and then we kind of plateaued for about a week. And probably the most difficult part was Mr. Moore. Every morning before school and after school, it was like, needs to be done tomorrow. And I was like, alright, tomorrow's the day. And then it was then the next day. And then finally we got to finish. I guess the wait was the hardest part.
You have it?
Sure.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, tonight, we are establishing a record, hopefully not setting a precedent. I'm starting the boarding off by announcing no school tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
You did that at Wagner.
I did that at Wagner.
It's been that kind of year.
I don't know, Tony, this is not good. I know.
Is this our first one?
Yes, this will be our fourth day. So that calendar I gave you, the last board meeting, we had one more day in there. I told Mr. Moore tonight, don't play anything for June 30th. Just kidding. So yes, this will be our fourth storm day. So that's where we are with that. I don't need to read to you, but I do, I indicated my agenda notes appreciation to go to the National Superintendent's Conference where I was with 5,000 superintendents. The day started off again in a very unusual way because that was a shooting in Florida that day. And it actually stuck the conference and paid attention to the immediate theme and a lot of our colleagues obviously left that day. But you can see the themes that some of the conferences I attended, such as the culture was very impressive, union negotiations, Scott, obviously we're encountering, we'll talk about later tonight. But the one that I intended that I wasn't alarmed by, and I think I've shared this over the last few months, but the board members have been on the board for some time, now superintendent school board relations. I think we do a pretty good job with that, but here's the fact that some of you may not realize. The average tenure of a superintendent schools in the United States, the average tenure length, close, 38 months. Three years, two months. Most people don't even have their pictures on the wall and they're walking out. So think about superintendent relations when you have your superintendent school that is with you basically for three years. They talked about board turnover. And I mean, we've had a fairly significant turnover in our board. But most notably was the track record associated with the short tenure of superintendent schools. So it was a great conference in Nashville. Weather was, was good. And next year I'm at Hampden, I actually asked Regan to go, it's in Los Angeles. And these are very powerful. I'm sure some of you in your profession, if you go to a national conference, shame on you if you don't wear anything because this is unbelievable. In addition to the networking that you do, as I've shared with Regan before, I've been in conferences with superintendents where the superintendent from Alaska has 250 kids but he has to fly to all the schools. And then you sit next to the superintendent schools from Cincinnati, Ohio, who has 65,000 kids. It's really remarkable. So that's that. At this time, I'm going to ask the principals to give a short overview with respect to safety in their schools and also just to make note of the upcoming National Walkout Day. And I put a copy of Mr. Rue's letter that he sent home to parents, it's on the website as well. So each principal should give you an overview of the safety in their schools and any modifications they've made and then if you have any questions. So let's start off with our host, Mrs. Briggs.
Hi there. Thank you very much for coming tonight. So I have a really quick overview of what McGrath's safety procedures are. Basically, we have, we do practice fire drills and practice lockdowns. We have eight fire drills and two lockdowns each year. We have everything timed, so we know how long it takes for our students to get out of the building and how long the all-clear signal is given for the fire drills. So we have that plan in place. At our first lockdown on November 29th, I asked Officer Stewart to come over and assist me in giving any pointers that he could as we did that lockdown. He was able to give us some other information. I think this building is very, for those of you that haven't been through it, this building is very unique. We have a lot of exterior doors. Pretty much every classroom has an exterior door. It also has doors between the classrooms and then doors between the classrooms side by side. And so we don't have a lot of like spaces where you could hide. So we have some plans in place for that. We have safety packets posted prominently in every single classroom and any place where there would be students. So like our special ed rooms also have these. And they are bright in color so that you can see them. They have job cards in there as well. So our safety packets are color-coded. And within the safety packets, there are job cards that match whatever the paper is, the colored paper along with it. So if you have a job card, it will tell you exactly what you are supposed to do. This is mostly for like principals, secretaries, the custodians. We all have like special job cards. So we have that in place. We have, and we also review those and update those every single year. As I said, we have a lot of exterior doors, but every single door is always locked. We always have them locked at all times. There, the one front door that we have that you can have access to during the school day is a, there's a button we push. The person would ring the doorbell outside and we get a visual of who it is and then we have a button to push to unlock that door. Children know, and I was talking about this on my school tour that I did a little while ago, our students know you do not ever, ever open a door, ever. And it was funny because one day I had locked myself out and I was over here by the playground and I'm knocking on the door to let me in and the kids were looking at me like, mm-mm. They know. The other, the latest thing that we're doing now also is we're keeping our wing doors locked as well. At Weatherby, they use magnets, so you can close the door and it stays closed, but it doesn't necessarily lock. So it's a great safety feature to be able to slide that magnet up and close the door and it's automatically locked as opposed to having to come out, play with the key, get it all locked. So we have that in place as well now for quick locking. And finally, one of the big things we do also is we have monthly safety meetings. We have the district one where the area principals, we all meet together and talk about safety concerns. And then we have the one held here at McGrath where I bring information back and we share concerns. And then they share with me what I can take to the next district safety committee meeting. Is there anything I missed that you'd like more information about?
Thank you, but thank you for exciting the safety committee because
Yes.
We actually attend that as well.
Yes.
We were talking before, tonight we have no board number represented on the committee. It meets at 7:30 in the morning.
Yep.
Second Tuesday.
Yep.
So if you're interested, please join.
Next Tuesday, I believe.
There are other people. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Mrs. Moore, Smith Elementary.
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
Sorry. Do you feel that there is enough coverage as far as resource officers go?
I'm probably not the one to ask because I don't have a distinct need of that all the time. Probably not as much as the other schools.
Well, I mean, face-to-face with kindergartners and law enforcement is a good place to start so we don't see them as an outsider.
Right, right. Officer Stewart is always there when I need him and I truly appreciate that. So I would say that for me, he is a great resource and you know, like I said, he was supportive of that.
Would you benefit from having another resource officer here as well? Is what I'm getting at.
Right. I'm not sure, Tony, to be honest with you. I, I think probably I could utilize Officer Stewart even more, but you know, I'm not sure. Probably it'd be easier to ask somebody like, like Bill or somebody that would use somebody more than that.
Honest, honestly, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Try and engage.
Yep.
One area I think that McGrath and Weatherby are a little vulnerable is where you have students going between buildings.
We do.
And I love that as a parent, but also causes me anxiety because those are doors that are being opened throughout the day.
Right.
What, I mean, you recognize that. Do you have, what's, what?
The biggest thing is that the teachers are right with the students, obviously. They take them to the room, they take them down to that building, they unlock the door, they go in, the teacher watches them go in, the door closes behind them and it's locked. So there's, there's always an adult supervision between the buildings. The doors are locked behind the students. So yes, we are very aware of that. I mean, the other, the other piece of it is out to the, our white buildings for our literacy support and for special ed support. I mean, that's another area where you're leaving the building and going out. But we're also leaving the building to go out to the recess and you know.
And they don't have bathrooms out there, right?
No, no, you do not have bathrooms in our portables, in our cottages. You do not.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Miller.
So I can pretty much mimic what Kristen just said about the safety. Because we all use, in the district, we use the "I love you guys" so we all follow the same formats for fire drills, lockdowns, lockouts. So we use the "I love you," you can look up that, it's online, the way to do it with the green and red cards. We keep a packet, just like she does, near our, every teacher has a packet in their room with a spare key in there. We have our doors locked to our classrooms and we have, we, we don't put magnetic pieces, we put little cute cloth pieces over that we can slide off for lockdowns. Our building is locked from the time children come in the morning till they leave in the afternoon. There is an adult letting them in in the morning and both, we let them in two different spots, at a drop-off and a bus drop-off spot.
Mrs. Moore, didn't you just adjust the locking time in the morning for your door recently?
We did. We were, we were actually leaving it open from 6:30 in the morning until the students came in in the morning, but we have now locked it and the teachers have to use their key to get in in the morning.
So that's been made in the last couple of weeks, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, that's an adjustment we made.
Any questions for Dunn?
I think Kristen settled for me.
Any questions?
Sure.
Would you have, would you drive that bit from an additional resource officer in our district?
Well, that would depend because being Winnaport right now, we are a separate county, so we don't access the resource officer as much as Hampden does area. So we have reached out to the Waldo County sheriffs who've been very helpful anytime we've needed them. So our need for one, it definitely wouldn't hurt for us to be able to access one more often, but right now because of the way it's designed, we don't have the opportunity to necessarily tap in as much as we might be able to if it were more district-wide.
And the time frame of course coming from Belfast. Right, that was going to be my question, is what's the typical response time if you did need law enforcement?
So, for example, I called a couple of weeks ago. It probably took him 25 minutes. But I will also say we've had to call the ambulance before, we've had to call, in emergency, they, they really do their best to get there quickly. But when we call an officer as a backup for something, it has taken a longer, longer period of time for them to get there.
If they were in, and help me on this, if there were an emergency at Wagner or Smith, you would have the prerogative to go there, is that correct?
Yeah. What I've done in the past is I start to whichever school needs the service and then while I'm in route, I'm on the phone calling Waldo saying FYI, I am headed to this, would you start units? Again, depending on where they are, it could be 20, 25 minutes if they're coming out of Belfast. I personally have responded to incidents in Winnaport, handled them, dealt with it, fired it down, whatever it was, until Waldo or the state police can get there because it's unique in that they have what they call call sharing. So one week when you dial, you make it the sheriff. The next week you're going to get a trooper. It's not the same department every time. So I usually calm everything down, do what I need to do and then turn it over to them and let them take it, step back and assist.
Basically, the troopers responding versus sheriff, is turnaround time any faster?
What they do is the county is divided up into sections. And so if it's the sheriff's department's turn to cover that end of the county, that deputy can be anywhere in his patrol area. So he could be in Winnaport, could be in Belfast doing reports. Same thing is going to happen to the state police. So when I've been called by one of the schools down there that is urgent, then I already start and get there and at least keep things calm till they can get there and turn it over to them. And my response time from here to there is usually a little faster than that.
And when you had to do that, how long does it take for sheriff or trooper to get there? When you get there, how long do you have to wait for that?
Again, I've waited, you know, 15, 20 minutes for them to get there and then turn things over and meanwhile, sat there. There have been times I've gone down, dealt with issues and just canceled them. Said I've taken care of it, this is what I've done. Got any questions? No, fine, done. So sometimes they don't even have to get there.
So do you know where the [inaudible]?
It's not, actually, that's not me, it's pretty good if you compare [inaudible]. I mean, it just makes your thing and how they have the sheriffs fund it.
Thank you, Scott County, because you look at.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Dunn.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Sears.
Tenants.
Weatherby Elementary School.
Tenants.
So part of our safety is systemic and so the ladies have done a great job. So I'm going to add a couple of other things that may not have been mentioned. A big part of our safety plan is making sure we're properly identified. And so, you know, we want to have that conversation with students. If you see something, say something. And that includes, if you see an adult without a badge, that's a problem. And so, you know, some of our practices include making sure our substitutes are properly identified and in addition that they know how to respond in an emergency. And so having those key points in the classroom as well as some mechanisms for them to respond as well is a key part, without going into specifics because we certainly don't want to compromise those plans. You mentioned going between buildings. One of the things that we added to address kind of that vulnerability is making sure that specialists that are going between our facilities have radios. That way they can respond promptly and certainly that supervision and attentiveness is key. I think one of the things that our schools do exceptionally well is taking great care of kids. And I want to keep that focused because that is one of the absolute best ways to keep our school safe, focusing on culture, making sure that we welcome students each and every day, having an adult to welcome them in the building and say goodbye to them as well. Some of the safety measures that we've taken internally are really looking at students holistically. And that means not just academics, but noticing their social, emotional well-being as well as their presence. You mentioned, you know, police support. When I call Dan, most likely it's because I'm noticing a student isn't there. And I think tracking that data systematically is a huge red flag, especially at K5. That is a huge risk for indicators. And so, one of the things I'm very, very proud of our teams is number one, how we group students. One, how we monitor them. And so each week at Weatherby, those small teams are monitoring their students on those three categories. Were students there? How are they performing academically? And what are they noticing them, noticing about them socially and emotionally? And so that is part of our school-wide SLO to, to do that. And so I, I think that's yielding really big results. And so, you know, we are, we are using that data to really inform interventions and extra supports at a faster pace should we need. I think noticing is critical, that, you know, that's, that's the big impetus that I think all of us are looking at. And so that heightened awareness is key. Do you have any questions for me?
I just want to say I love, I love what you just said.
Thanks. I feel like after the safety talk, I want to give everybody a great big hug right now.
No, because I was, Rick and I actually talked today, you know, when we look at where we want to pull resources, like they do so much as a district with their guidance program and we do so much try to wrap around students, so there's more we can do around adding building and identifying those who might be at risk. And if we identify them younger, we're likely to prevent both academic challenges and social challenges that child may encounter. And I know Bill's done a lot in his past with that support and so as a, I just want to, that excites me and something that I would totally support missing.
Kelly O'Brien Weaver is here and she's our school counselor. And one of the things that I love that I've inherited is she does a belonging to school survey. And that is amazing. That's phenomenal data to track three through five because we can see students' feelings about their connectedness to school. And that is powerful. And so I think we need to be looking in the right areas. And I, I do think by taking good care of kids socially, emotionally, it can't just be about academics. And we do have to intervene early. And so when you ask about resources that would be helpful, having more social workers, supporting our school counselors to do that good work, to have wraparound services for families, those are essential, I think, to make big progress. That's what I would advocate for.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Okay, Mr. Rue, Reed for a middle school. Do you have your letter that he has sent to his parents just for information?
So we'll start with our safety protocols and procedures. First, it's, it's easier for a middle school than dealing with kindergarten and first graders. They've practiced certain drills throughout the years, so their response time is very quick. So when we started looking at what can we improve on and everything else, one of the things that we had noticed is usually our, our morning and afternoon routines. About December, we decided to, when we opened up our doors for dismissal time, we actually closed our wing doors down. Because that's a time in which we still have teachers working with students, but we did have some people that would just come in and go to say hi to the teachers while they're still working and stuff like that. We're trying to make it so that we're still welcoming, but have some guides along the same way. So we want them to be able to funnel through the office instead. Most of the parents have been fairly receptive to it. Some, it's a change and it's hard for them. I understand that. In the afternoon, in the mornings, our routine is, I have someone on the side door where people have dropped off. You know, over the course of the last few weeks, we also have someone there guiding traffic. Because that's also a risk where we have several students trying, parents dropping their kids off, creates quite a traffic jam. When buses are trying to go down to HA, parents are trying to come up. So we have someone guiding traffic and someone just inside the door welcoming students as they come through the side door. But then we also have buses out front dropping kids off and we have someone right in the lobby area as well watching right now. So we're trying to tighten things up in the morning routine. In the afternoon routine, we are keeping the side doors locked, whereas before it was opened up. And like I said, our wing doors are shut, so people have to come in through the front right now. And it's a balancing act between the security and still feeling welcome. So it is a transition time that we're working on right now. Any questions on that portion?
Those changes made after the February 14th?
Some of them have been. The locking of the wing doors was right around Christmas time. And we had done that because we had seen an influx of people. And we had done that because we had seen an influx of people not stopping by the office. We just kinda recognized that as something that we needed to tighten up on a little bit. So it's a in-motion piece. As far as the March fourteenth piece, which is a letter that I've given you, this hasn't been posted quite yet. This is something that's going to be going on our website and going out to the staff and parents. And this is dealing with the March fourteenth walkout date for students. We wanna make sure that the students are provided a safer way to express themselves. But as I explained to the faculty earlier, having a national day in which, you know, people are saying, you know, students should walk out to do this, it's not, it's not, how do I wanna put this? It scares me considerably, having students outside of the building that's being advertised nationally. So I wanna make sure that they have a safe space to be. So we're providing that inside the building, alright, that's gonna be there. And we also have things that, I don't want it to become a political statement, but I do wanna make sure that we recognize everybody's feelings and thoughts. So the purpose of this is to be able to promote unity among our students. And we're giving them some activities. But also if they and their parents feel strongly and they wanna protest, we've told them when and where and how they can do that in the letter as an avenue. So we're trying to meet the needs of everybody while still trying to keep everything as safe as possible. So you have the letter in front of you, so I won't go into details, read that at your leisure.
Okay, thank you, Don. What are your thoughts on a resource officer relationship?
I came from a district that was in Somerset County. I didn't have access to a resource officer there and I had to rely on county police. And I remember times in which I had to spend two hours waiting for someone. I come to a district now where if I need to call Officer Stewart, he is there faster than I've ever imagined. But so, I guess I can't answer that without knowing what it would be like throughout the entire district. I would tell you that having someone in the building occasionally, like he walks through and says hi, it's important, absolutely. But at the same time, my needs in Reeds Brook are not like the needs that I had in the past. So right now it's still hard to judge. But I will tell you, not having a two-hour wait time for me, this is vacation.
What I'm looking at is twenty-three hundred students scattered across one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different buildings and having one officer rural area that theoretically is covering all of those seems disproportionate. Regan didn't give an update at the end because she did attend the town council meeting on Monday.
And you came from the full district that had a school resource officer.
Correct. Right, but it was for the Penobscot County side. So Somerset County, we weren't always afforded the opportunity. And I remember times in which I had called the SRO because of an extremely volatile situation and he had, wasn't able to come because it was over county lines. And the person who did respond was actually in Jackson. So I did wait two hours and we exited students through the back. But so I've been in some tough situations before. But yeah. So when you guys, I don't think this is the wrong way. When you're talking about response time being twenty-five minutes and stuff like that, I'm thinking, that's awesome. But everything's being relative.
Dr. Glenn Ross, Reedford Middle School.
Hi, everybody. In light of recent national events, I thought it useful to include like our safety overview in your board packets this month. I apologize for the typos, I've been reading this over, I guess I didn't have my proofreader in place. But I think safety protocols need to be clear and defined and posted and available to people. But I think also it's important that safety protocols are fluid because things change over time. And so, one thing that I think is important is to have a process for regular review of your safety protocol. So we have, I attend district safety committee meetings along with other staff members from around the district and we talk about school safety things. But at the building level, we have a regular safety team meetings at the building level and we make adjustments based on different things that, you know, that happen. So today we had an emergency situation that we had to respond to and our plan worked very well in place, but we learned a few things from that, that it didn't go 100% the way we want it to and we make adjustments to that. So that's something we'll bring back to the safety meeting. So again, I wanna emphasize the importance of that fluidity within safety planning. But we do have clear safety protocols in place and I think the collaboration with Winterport Fire and Safety, I can emphasize the importance of that. We have Phil up to Wagner quite often and we walk around, he helps us with our evacuation drills and different types of planning around that. We have a collaboration with Waldo County Sheriff's Office. They do regular visits to our school as do the state police, but it's more, we have a more regular connection with Waldo County Sheriff's Office. They show up, you know, every couple of weeks, we'll do a walk around, that sort of thing. And Officer Stewart comes down and, you know, we collaborate and he's available for emergencies. So all of those things are kinda like pieces of our school plan. But if you wanna get down to specifics, we have all school doors, interior and exterior are locked during the school day. We have video monitoring and surveillance system in place on our front doors and on our back doors to the building. And those are in place, they record video like twenty-four hours a day and we can go back in time to look, you know, if something happens two in the morning, we can go back and look at that. So that's very helpful. It also helps you can see who's coming in the building through the radio. We have restricted access to the building, all visitors must enter through the main office and be signed in during the school day. I can't say 100%, but many staff are trained in CPI. And Lynn, I can't remember CPI stands for, but it's Crisis Prevention Intervention. So it's a system that helps, if someone's in crisis, staff are trained to like talk that person down and other emergency response protocols. We do regular safety drills and like fire drills, lockdown drills, lockout, shelter in place and building evacuation drills. We follow the district I love you safety protocols, those are posted in all classrooms, they're in substitute teacher folders and available. We participate in, and I've been personally trained in the bullying and harassment issues and those are in compliance with district protocols and state protocols, which were new last year, I attended training on that. And I think most importantly, and Mrs. Seer touched on this topic, we recently revised our school code of conduct at Wagner for this current school year. And it's based on the positive behavioral interventions and supports. And like Mrs. Seer said, I think we need to build a culture within the school. And PBIS really focuses on clear and consistent behavioral expectations for students, teaching those to kids, so you're building a climate. They know what the expectations are, but they are also part of creating that, okay? So you're building a climate where kids are connecting with the adults in the building and having a bond there. We wanna acknowledge kids for demonstrating expected behaviors, you know, good job. And we have different things in place for that. We have after-school trips where we reward kids for doing the right thing. We have, you know, different protocols around that. And I think consequences for behavior need to be clear and consistent. All staff need to be kinda following the same protocols, so we have that in place. And you need to collect that data and you need to regularly review it. So we have what we call the discipline review committee at Wagner, we're meeting this Friday as a matter of fact, to review the third quarter data on student behavior. And I'm happy to admit that this year we have more office referral forms this year than last year, but much less, they're for less severe things. And I think, so we have that consistency. They're trying to build, you know, a culture within the school. And so I think that's really important to do that. So that's kind of an overview of our school safety protocols. I wanted to touch briefly on the March fourteenth National Student Walkout Day. So our school safety committee meeting met for a part of the day during our recent in-service. We developed a comprehensive plan and I'll just give you a quick summary of that. We wanna run a regular school day. We'd like students to stay inside the school building for safety reasons, okay? And we're gonna provide a safe space inside the school building between ten and ten seventeen. Okay? And we're only gonna provide that space for students who request an opportunity to participate in that day. And we want the focus to be on issues related to school safety. So we're gonna have, it's gonna be a quiet time to reflect and students will be given like paper or, you know, so that they can reflect on issues of school safety. We're very careful about not trying to guide their, you know, we want them to share their opinion, whatever that is, to help us. And we can use that feedback maybe to bring that back to our safety committee and inform, you know, maybe we need to make some adjustments. So I think it has a practical purpose for that. And I think I wanna emphasize that school rules and safety protocols will remain in place during that day. And should students leave the school building, we have, our safety team came up with a protocol for managing that. So we're, you know, we're well prepared for that particular day. Questions?
This may be more directed at Sergeant Stewart. With the videos, with the video cameras, is that anything that there's like remote access to videos? I guess both for your school and also for HJ. I know there's several districts that on local line, of course, we can access.
Remote access, that's a good question. Because we just upgraded our system just recently, like within the last year or so. And I wanna defer to Nate.
I can tell you that it's not currently set up that way. I think for Hammond Academy, there may be one individual that can access them remotely on a specific laptop, but there is no connection to the police department at this point.
So the system's in my office and we kinda have to sit down, you know, get the manual out and figure out like if we wanna record what happened at two in the morning, for example, like a twenty-minute block. We have used that a couple of times and, you know, when we've had, someone broke into our shed one time and we actually could see the person and that was helpful for the police. Yeah? Same question, yeah, yeah. I anticipated that. So today, our situation today, I had to wait twenty-five, thirty minutes. Waldo County came from, they were traveling from Belfast. And, you know, I think today was different because the situation was, there was no safety issue as much, but I had to wait and we're holding kids on the bus and, you know, it took a long time. And I was kinda worried about wanting to get kids home, you know. So it would've been nice if they could've been there quicker. And I think, but can we use a resource officer? To answer your question specifically, sometimes, you know, most of the time, no. But sometimes when we have those emergency situations and I have to wait for Officer Stewart to come down or today, you know, when I had to wait thirty minutes or so, you know, that can be troubling depending on what the situation is. And so, but most of the time, I think things are coming along pretty well for the majority of the time. But you never know when those emergency situations are gonna arise, that's the thing, you just never know.
Thank you, Richard. If you wanna respond, Richard, the board is all fully aware, but I wanna express appreciation to Scott. As he responded quickly, we had a posting on the district Facebook page because obviously it's important in the era that we're now in. The people need to know what's going on because we did know when this youngster was on the bus that other kids on the bus have their cell phones and they were texting their parent that the police officer on the bus and all kinds of things kind of built up from there. So when you anticipate something like this, you never do it perfectly. I thought it was handled very well today, like Richard said, we learned a couple of things and we'll go from the A minus to the A plus next time because those are very unique situations. It wasn't a serious situation today, but it's a situation we had to deal with. So thank you very much, Scott, you have a nice evening. Okay, all right, Mr. Tracy, Hammond Academy.
So I'll just start by saying, you know, when you start talking about school safety, what Mrs. Seer alluded to, talking about the culture and the climate, that's my number one goal within a system, whether you're talking about with your staff, with your students. From day one, I try to be in the lobby to greet students as they come in and greet staff as they come in because I think building that immediate relationship and bond helps. Now, we have our AA which students are in once a week. We also have our HART team that monitors students. There's a lot of those pieces that monitor the students and how they're doing and we really just try to build those relationships. Outside of that, when you're talking about our building, we're so fortunate that we have a building like HJ in that every door is locked. From school day, start of school day to end of school day, we're locked down 100%. Most recently, we've locked all classroom doors 100% of the time. I'm stealing the magnetic strips ideas so we can keep those closed. Even when we have subs and we don't have keys for them, we can find a right way to do that and keep our students safe. We had a lockdown today and it was a practice lockdown and I had every door locked, every situation the way I would've wanted it to be. So I'm very happy about that. But we have two different places, we can remote lock every, lock down every door. We have video monitoring that's in our main office at all times and the video scrolls through. I couldn't tell you exactly how many cameras, maybe eighteen to twenty or more cameras that are constantly going. There's one in Nick Raymond's office and one right in the main office. So we have constant access over those things. If someone wants to come in during the day, they come into our foyer and they have to be buzzed in, is the only way. Recently, we've also, our doors were open at six o'clock in the morning to allow people to come in. Now we've cut that down to seven o'clock. And usually, you know, this week I've been there at, you know, six fifty and I make sure I stay in the lobby and I make sure no one comes in that I don't recognize and that's not sustainable, to be honest with you, that's just not. But when it can be, I'll do it as much as I can because it serves me dual-fold. I can meet students when they come in, meet staff when they come in and also monitor who's coming into the building. But we're very fortunate, we can monitor every door, we have our ID tags that also let us into certain areas. We restrict that access, even staff don't have that to every single door that they come into. But those are the things that we do just to keep our students safe and we continue to adjust. We meet as our district safety committee, we also meet as our school safety committee. Today we learned some things that were, again, not nerve-wracking or scary at all, but things we like, oh, you know, we're not doing this the way we wanna do it, let's try something different. And the nice part to do it in AA today was the fact that they can debrief with their teachers and at least have a conversation. So we feel like we're very comfortable in that. The only issue that I see moving forward is that seven o'clock to eight o'clock timeframe. How do you monitor that lobby because we have that one access point? What's the best way to go? And we've tossed around some ideas in that. Any questions on our safety piece?
Before, I'm trying to remember, the Hammond Academy Fitness Center was open to the public, has that been shut down?
So it's not, it's open to the public in, so in the evening when school ends, our ending time, it's open. The building is now an open building. And I've spoken with Nick Raymond who's, you know, again, serves as our assistant principal, but also is in so many other schools for reffing. And he's been in one school, he remembers that the doors are locked 100% of the time after school. So we've talked about that, how do we do that? How do we keep that balance between being a really, a community-driven place and not? We do have, I believe there are some adult ed classes that are done. I think there's a one fitness one at five forty-five in the morning that runs maybe, you know, once a month. I'd have to go back and look at that. But in the morning, they'd have to, they'd have to be buzzed in, they'd have to come in. So I think that's a little more of a hassle by locking the doors at that time. And again, we're not locking our students out, it's just when people come in, you know, we wanna make sure. But it is really, it's not an open place. I had a parent ask me the other day, we know you wanna be an open place to the community and your library is open. Well, that's not the case either, you know, so they would have to come in at a certain time and certainly not during the school day, it just doesn't work that way.
So you wanna touch on the next week's walkout day, what is on HJ?
Yeah, it's been, again, I wanna talk about the word organic. Really trying to let this be organic and student-driven. When it first popped up, we knew the students were interested. There are several students who are interested, probably three or four, that I've spoken to about, that kinda have the leadership role in it and we're embracing it. We're gonna let the students gather, but we're not gonna let them walk out. It's gonna be a walkout of class, but not a walkout of the building. And the students I've spoken with understand why we're doing it that way. We want a safe spot, we want them to be able to have their voices heard. We want them to be able to have their voices heard. So we want them to be able, you know, work through this process the way any process would be if you're looking to change something. So the focus, though, has been really nice. I, I haven't had to say, it needs to be about this, it needs to be about this. Just have a conversation with them. They want to talk about school safety. They want to talk about student safety. They want to talk about being kind to one another and how we fix that, and how we look at our society as a whole, not about gun control, not about the other stuff that's, that becomes political. Their voices that I've heard loud and clear have all been around, if it gets political, it becomes white noise. And that's not what they want. They want to be able to have that seventeen minutes. We'll run our classes. We'll allow students who want to go to the designated area and have a conversation. We'll allow that. But beyond that, we're not going outside of the building, and it's not going to be a debate or an argument. It's going to be a conversation, a healthy conversation, and a chance to not only talk about how we increase safety, but also how we honor the people who passed away.
Okay. Thank you, folks, for those presentations. Sergeant Stewart, did you want to wrap it up with any comments from your perspective, please?
Well, I'll get that over to the spot here. I don't want to mess you up. The, just so you know, Hammond Public Safety, which is the fire of the police department, EMS, we train to respond to these type of incidents. At least every two years, because it becomes a thing of money and time, we have the main state police tactical team comes in, and we set up scenarios in one of our schools. And then usually the tac team plays the bad guys, and we got to go find them and take care of the issue. And that's one of the ways we learn how to better approach emergencies in our building by actually practicing in our building. I mean, it's great to go away to school and learn all these nice things while sitting at a desk. It's a hundred percent different when you're in a school and you're using sim munition, which is wax bullets, and you can get shot, and it really hypes it up. Your blood pressure's up there, and it gives us real training that we can, you know, have experience of how we're going to approach our own buildings. And I think practicing our own buildings, so we know how we're going to approach a stairwell, how we're going to approach problem areas, because we already know they're there, is beneficial to us. So that type of training is ongoing all the time. And it's, it's always changing. We went from Columbine years ago, where the police training was you surrounded the building, and you waited for a tac team to come, come in and take care of the issue. Well, that didn't work. People were getting killed. So then it went forward to you're going in with a four-man team, wait for the first four officers, the officers form up, and then they go in as a hunter team to take care of the issue. And now it's progressed to the point, the first officer there is going to do whatever they need to do. In my case, I'm already there, I'm in the building, if it happens at Hammond Academy, or I'm already on campus, if it happens on this campus. So we practice it, we prepare for it. EMS does triage drills of how they would handle wounded. So these are all things we do. We don't go into specifics, because we don't put tactical plans out there, because then somebody reads up on it and figures out what they're going to go around her back and try something else. So the same thing in the schools. We have adopted the I love you guys program. When I came here, we had six schools that did six different things. So if we had an ITN teacher that went from Hammond Academy to a school in Winnipeg to teach music, for example, how that was done there was different here, and it was, it was not conducive to being safe. So everything's done the same, no matter what building you're in, we do it the same way. And so, and it's easy, because it starts from kindergarten goes to high school. So you don't want changing plans halfway through, and the kid's got to relearn something. It's the same thing over and over. And it's kind of drummed into their head. Any questions? Yes?
This is both for you and also for the district. Has any, does the district send anyone to like active shooter trainings? Because I know there's been a lot of different trainings throughout the Bangor area over the last couple of years.
Yes. I have gone to some training. Some other offices have gone to training. We have a training coming up, I believe, in April. School violence and that type of thing that's being held open for. So in Maine, every police officer that comes to the academy, whether you're state trooper, county, municipal, game warden, marine patrol, you all get the same training on how to deal with a active shooter situation. And the reason is, there's not that many of us in the state. We don't have the luxury of New York City having forty-six thousand police officers. Okay? So when we come in, it's going to be different color uniforms, and we're going to get together, but we've all trained the same way, so we know what we're going to do when we just do it. So EMS is the same way. They have certain protocols. How are you going to deal with injured? Where are you going to put them? How do you categorize them? And every EMT is taught the same thing. So you don't have multiple agencies coming in, like, no, we do it this way, and get into a fight over how it's going to be done. We're all trained the same way. So that makes it easier when something happens, that it's just hopefully a well-oiled machine, everything meshes, and we just do our thing.
Regan, do you want to give the board an update on your meeting with town council this past Monday?
Stand up to the audience to come here as well. RSH-22 was approached following the incident in Florida about our interest in considering a second SRO in RSH-22. And I was invited to attend a lot with Dan Stewart and Joe Rogers from Hammond Public Safety Town Council meeting on Monday night. And the interest is that we consider a second SRO for RSH-22. There is going to be a request for a second road officer in Hampton as well. And could there in some way be a partnership between the need for that level of patrol officer in Hampton and an SRO? And we certainly are open to evaluating the needs. I think as you've heard tonight, one thing I'd like to share with you is that when you think about the value of an SRO, I think it's three-pronged. It's education, there's relationship building, so that as the students come up through the system, they trust in the officer and in the public safety organization, and are willing to report, because we know that students who report are absolutely allowing us insight and being able to take action in appropriate ways. And then there's also the aspect of security. What I share with town council is that we certainly will move forward to evaluate the need, but also consider how other positions and teams in our school district are able to provide those three prongs as well. And I think as you've heard tonight, we are building relationships through, certainly teacher-to-student relationships are significant, administrators are getting very involved with students directly, and then we have guidance, nurses, and social workers who are in our buildings. Security is always something we're going to work at, no matter what. And whether we have a second SRO or just one, we're still going to have buildings that aren't manned at any one moment. So we've got to be ready, no matter where we are. But a priority we do have in this discussion is that Winterport needs to be able to share just as heavily in coverage as Hampton. And how are we going to get some type of sharing across county lines to make this work? And we think there certainly would be ways. So in the budget process, you're going to be hearing about this discussion, because if we did move forward with a second SRO, whether it's part-time or full-time, it would be a budgetary line for RSH-22 to cover the portion that we would be seeking.
Is the grant, yeah, it was four or three years, four years?
It was October two thousand and thirteen.
There was a federal grant, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, and we had to pay a hundred percent the fourth year. Is that still available?
No, it's not. Dan, Sergeant Stewart, you actually looked upon that, right? That grant is not open right now. Historically, it usually opens once a year. Currently, that not, grant is not available. If that became available, that would be something we could look at. And like you were saying, it, it's a four-year grant. The line share is paid by the grant the first year, and it slowly fades off the fourth year. It's totally up to the entity. And then they can evaluate, decide whether to keep it or not, is the way those work. Our original SRO position started, I don't know, eighteen years ago, whatever it's been now, and that's how it started. It was a cop fast grant, and we use federal money, and then the position was absorbed.
If there was a timing issue, city council wanted you to commit to it. Our budget was already published right afterwards.
That's correct, also.
So how far would we have to plan in advance? We would have to plan now, next year.
That's right.
The grant's not going to open about once a year?
It's usually, my understanding is it opens up about once a year. And so we would have to apply for it. And one of the things, part of the grant is says, yes, we have the funds available to pay our portion. And we went through that. It made it through, I think, three council meetings where it was approved, there was an election, the council is changed, and then it was defunded. So we had to turn it back. So that's what happened to that position at that point.
So once we start, we, me and Reagan, I start distributing the draft budget, the administrative team will continue this conversation. But I want to amplify a key point, particularly that Mrs. Seer mentioned. The SRO addition, which I would support, really what it does is strengthens our team. Guidance counselors, teachers, specialized teachers, principals, and so on. And look at, Amanda, we have, I think I mentioned this to you before, we have a number of hours that we buy from Acadia Hospital that's president of Hammond Academy. So we have a lot of resources there. And I think the additional SRO time can help galvanize and even strengthen it. So as Reagan alluded to, you'll hear more of that in the upcoming weeks as that pertains to the fiscal note of it. And I emailed you just a few days ago with respect to what our commitment now with Sergeant Stewart's position is. John?
So as we talk about school safety, it seems to me now more than ever, it doesn't make sense to me that the library is open one day a year to pull.
Yes.
So can we have a discussion with Phil Petula about?
Matter of fact, we received an email.
From Jake?
Yes, just a couple of days ago. I will follow up with that with Phil. Yes, I will. And I would encourage our Winterport coordinators, and I think I probably have talked to all of you, that maybe we can convince Phil that the November election should be taking place at your municipal office.
Or June. Was it June?
Yeah, the June. So yes, I'll follow up on that, John, and you could certainly assist me in that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I responded to Jake saying I did involve finding my location too, but it's going to start with Phil.
There's no, I think I mentioned to you in one of our conversations, not last summer, the summer before, that June election was held in municipal office, because I actually went down to visit that that day. There's no reason, in my opinion, there's no reason why you can't have that at your new municipal office.
Well, and there's other options too in Winterport.
That's right. That's right, yes. But I'll follow up on that.
It just doesn't make sense to have that school open like that.
I agree.
Not only is it a safety, but it's a disruption to the students and the teachers throughout the day.
Why isn't that our decision? Why is it Phil's decision?
Well, we want to be a partner.
Well, of course.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know the history, how it even happened, how it even got set up to work, but.
I think it probably went back when you had your old town office, and apparently you didn't have the capacity. They probably approached us, I'm just making this up, but they probably approached us, yeah, you know, we want to be a partner with you. We want to help you, and we opened the school, and all of a sudden, now we realize the implications of that. The old town office wasn't even a town office, so it couldn't even, it couldn't even have the capacity for that. But I will follow up on that, John, yes. Joe?
Do we know, do we have any idea in terms of actual responses by the SRO? Which types of schools are we seeing? Is it mostly the middle school and the high school, or is it across the board? What's the percentage like?
I'd say middle school, high school, Dan, is that correct? Your response and your involvement primarily in middle school, high school?
Yes. I, most of my calls to service, per se, I'm going to the, I'm in the high school, I'm dealing with issues there. I get called to the middle school a lot. However, I do deal with the grade schools. I've been in this school to deal with issues, so it's not out of the realm that we're going to be here to deal with an issue. But the highest percentage are going to be the older children.
Do you actually collect data on where you, do you actually collect data on when you actually respond to situations?
If it is something that's going to be of criminal nature, I will generate a law enforcement report. If it's not, I usually don't, only because one of the ways school resource officer and school policing has gone is we try to not criminalize what goes on in the school. We try to deal with it as a teaching and learning thing. So if I'm dealing with something, and I can work with that school's principal, and they can come up with an in-school suspension, so they're not going to lose time, they can maybe have to see our drug and counselor over the high school, whatever the case may be, then the kid gets a lot more out of that, rather than getting a ticket from me and having mom and dad pay a fine and then go on. I, I think the school's tool box is much fuller of stuff that you guys can use to help these kids than making it a law enforcement thing. There's also been a big push that in some, mostly inner cities, when SRO is involved, the arrest rate goes up, because there's a cop there, and they're dealing with it. And they were saying that schools became a direct pipeline to jail. So there's, there's been kind of a pushback, saying we need to not handle it. So if it's not something that's going to go to court or that type of thing, I don't draw a number.
I wonder if there's a way to, so I think that we have a case manager currently involved with, they ride with the Bangor Police Department, and we've created a very simple Google form that she has right on her smartphone, and it's truly just to track data and track interactions and types of interaction, just so we know what, where the need is. I wonder if that would be something we're trying to.
But, but I keep a database with all behavioral reports, so I can, I have to look it up. But I'd say where we would need police support, one to three times a year, I mean, you know, sometimes, sometimes zero, but, you know, that'd be a ballpark figure. More often than not, what I would need, I need advice on something, like a legal issue or a situation that, that, you know, had potential.
I had to report that to the Department of Education on a monthly basis, so we have all what you receive from me. We also put that in. So at the end of the year, if you're interested, I could download and show you exactly what occurred in our schools at the end of the year.
I think what Amanda's also speaking to is those things where Dan's called and there's, he intervenes, but it doesn't escalate to any discipline, but we, the need was there. Like boards, we, we're being asked to potentially ask to fund an SRO or to apply for a grant, and we have no data to include that justifies the need, other than what happened in Florida.
I'll give a good example that we just, I'll share with you, that Wally and John are going to be participating in your Behavior Review Committee meeting on Friday with the student. Sergeant Stewart, Dr. Khan, Mrs. Wells and I, yesterday, we planned for that meeting. So Dan's had input with respect to the plan of action we're going to have on this young man as well, to try to have him redirected in the, in the right direction, if you will. Dan, did you want to add something?
Well, again, there's a lot of things that I do that doesn't look like it's police work. Sitting in on the safety committee meetings, being part of the HART team, we're trying to figure out how we're going to deal with kids that are tardy, that are late, that are, we're losing them, is, is a lot of what SROs do now. As my boss said at the council meeting, when he started forty years ago, he'd tell people, we're not social workers, we don't do that. Today, that's exactly what we do. I, a typical day for me, I'm doing physical checks of the building. Things are logged, rooms aren't left unlocked, PAC is not unlocked from a play that happened last night. Physical plant security is something I do as I'm walking through the building. But students come up to me and tell me I'm being bullied, or there was a fight between mom and dad at home. And I get involved in a lot of that. I work very closely with our guidance counselors and our substance abuse counselors, because our customer base is the same people. So I work closely with them, and again, a lot of that stuff does not generate numbers, because it, nobody's ever going to be charged with this stuff, but it does take out time. So that's a lot of the type of things I do. Other things that, and everybody could ask the question except me about, do you think you need another SRO? I'm going to butt in and say, in my view, back when I, years ago, another officer's the SRO, and back then, we had DARE. And I was a DARE officer. So I came in, I taught DARE classes in fifth grade, I taught DARE classes in seventh grade, So I came in, I taught DARE classes in fifth grade, I taught DARE classes in seventh grade, I taught DARE classes in Newburgh and Winterport on my days off so that they had the classes, and I did kindergarten visitations and that type of thing. So fast forward to now, things have changed, DARE is not in the program anymore, and where we had one and a half officers per se doing stuff, now it's one. There are things I would like to do. I would like to do more visitations in the younger classrooms, to talk to them, stranger dangers, simple things. But besides the information we give them is the fact that we're starting to build a rapport with the student. Because it always hurts me if you go in the grocery store and you see the parent that sits there and says, if you don't behave, he's taking you to jail. So now they're immediately scared of the police because if I misbehave, he's taking me to jail. Or we end up at their house and as a domestic and we arrest mom and dad, and that's the only thing that they have in their mind is the cops hauled off mom and dad. So there's a lot to be done in education with the kids, but that team building and that comfort building. When I came here as the SRO, I had been the DARE officer prior, all the students in the school, I had already a student. I already knew them, they knew me, they knew my sense of humor, and they would come and tell me things. I have students that graduated two or three years ago, that still come and tell me things that are going on in the school now. And I think part of that is, is because we've built a relationship. I don't want to stand at the door eight hours a day looking mean and guarding the front door to make sure, you know, the horde doesn't attack. I need to be able to circulate, socialize, and make those contacts so when a kid does see somebody posting something on their Facebook account, or they're looking stuff up, or they're making statements, that they'll come and tell me, rather than being, don't go to that guy because that's the one mom says is going to put me in jail. So there's a lot of stuff that is not considered traditional police work that SROs do. Would I like to see even that half position to be able to say, okay, we've still got somebody on the ham on campus, and we can spend some quality time down in Winterport and do some things? Yeah, that would be great. So that's my two cents worth. And I do it in the district and pay taxes. I have had two kids go through, I had an autistic child and a child with ADHD, and when I was working the road and thinking something bad happened in the schools, how I was going to respond? You know, that's still in my mind, is if something goes on, how we're going to deal with it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I know somebody who's an SRO in another district. I think in his role, he also helps co-teach some classes and then takes students who have a law enforcement interest out on like ride-alongs to understand more about law enforcement. So if we do look at it as sort of an additional position, that's some ideas just to think about.
I'll be teaching first aid, I mean, it's usually self-defense, and the legal aspects are the two P E classes, right?
That's a good point.
Also, that's part of what we do.
Do we have an evaluation process for our SROs?
Do we have an evaluation process for SROs? So basically, Dan, I believe you worked with the building principal to establish your goals and things of that nature, is that correct?
Yes, and they came up with a form that Nick Raymond, Mr. Raymond has on how to get the school's impact. Because it's kind of difficult for the chief to try to rate me when I actually don't do that much work under his direct supervision. I'm in the schools more than I'm on the road. So he wanted to get input from Mr. Raymond as a way to channel that in.
No, when you were in Buckfort in Mountview, did you have SROs in those schools as well?
Absolutely, yeah. A huge resource. And I will say, back to an earlier point, when I was at Mountview, the process at the high school was to charge with everything. So if there was a fight in the hallway, it was, the students were charged with disorderly conduct. And I don't know, wasn't there long enough to understand how that definitely worked, but I would say it was not a real successful model. We definitely had our SRO working to build relationships, speaking to the students. He was a fantastic resource, much like in Buckfort, just a great resource. I don't think you can have a high school now without having SRO available there the majority of the time, and then available to the rest of the district at other times.
Okay, thank you, folks. All right, so now we're down to, I just wanted to inform you that Dr. Glenn Cross has been appointed to the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission. And that's a very powerful group that basically oversees the accreditation process for all schools in New England states. I served on that a number of years ago, for a number of years, and it's a very invaluable learning experience. So congratulations to Richard on that.
Congratulations.
I want to commend Gloria for some superb work with respect to now the inclusion of policies and regulations on our website. If you're not familiar with what a regulation is, it's the roadmap to accomplish the policy. So now if someone's interested on the policy pertaining to whatever the theme may be, and if there's a regulation, that regulation now is available to the public. And we just uploaded those in the last couple of weeks. So if you haven't seen those, you might want to peruse those at your leisure. Okay. Mrs. Nichols?
The first thing we'll do this evening is review the budget by warrant articles. So we've reached the place in the budget year where we are two-thirds of the way into our fiscal year. As you can see, we would expect that we have about 33% remaining in our warrant articles, and we are there or better for each of our warrant articles, with the exception of a couple. So let's talk about Article Three, that's CTE instruction, that's UTC. That simply is the UTC assessment is paid on a different schedule than a 12-month cycle because the students don't arrive to start attending UTC until September. And so we are on track for that expenditure this year. Also, you'll see that we speak about this each month, our debt service remains low because all that we have left to pay this year is an interest payment in May. We pay out in November on debt service. Our other articles are right on track for expenditure for this point in the year. Any questions on any specific center?
Why does special Ed, Article Two, have over 40% overhang?
Well, certainly we have Lynn Wells here who can talk to us about expenditures, but we actually have tracked the expenditures. And Lynn, for your expenditures this year, we're on track with out-of-district placements where we have actually less out-of-district placements than we had anticipated, so we're doing well. Your cost center is very strong right now. Well managed. And that's the primary reason there. There are a couple of lines in that center that are actually expended quite heavily, including audiology, for instance, but other lines are compensated for that.
And just to follow that to, regular instruction, Article One is just about 40%. Is that, does that meet expectations in terms of where we would think that would be?
Yes, and part of that is when we have retirements from the prior year and we're bringing on new employees, we don't always know when we're budgeting exactly what step those employees will come onto the salary schedule. So we have had several hires where they actually have come in a lower salary band than the person who retired.
Thank you.
I just wanted to update you that we are continuing with budget development, and we are planning to have a meeting at the end of March. That will be our first public budget meeting. Before I say a date and commit to it, I'd like to be able to speak with Rob, so when he's back, we will discuss it. But you could plan that it will be coming probably about last week. Today, I concluded visits to each of the faculties at our buildings with kind of a foundational budget introduction. And I'd like to say that it feels as though that was well-appreciated time, and the feedback and perspective from faculty members was very strong. They were fantastic contributors, quite candid in their responses, and I think that we have some productive direction from simply asking the question about how our faculty members evaluate the budget, how it's utilized, and what they're able to receive from it. So we will be getting back to the faculty with some trends that I see and what they've reported to me, and also to follow up with some answers to some questions that were posed, or further education on angles that people are interested in knowing more about. So I think that it's a positive step for us to be reaching out. At our last board meeting, it was asked that we please have a bit of a presentation about unassigned fund balance versus capital reserve fund. So we're going to do that now.
I want to extend to Reagan's last point, her visits to the school, that's a new process for us this year. We've never done that before. So there's a little bit of change in procedure and protocol that I think is going to be very well received.
We do have some extras, so if there are folks in the audience that would like one, we certainly can get one out to you. Nate, is this Apple TV? I can do. Well, I don't think that helps the audience one bit, but at least you know I, it's there if you want to know more. Okay. Does the audience have some extras out there? So I'm just going to stand so everyone can hear me a little bit crazier. Bottom line is, the unallocated fund balance is a fund that we maintain in our RSHU 22, and I think I would say all school districts aim to have a fund balance. Because you're maintaining the fund for financial reserves to support your budget in the future, but also for emergencies and unforeseen expenses. And in our RSHU 22, we did have a conclusion of our year in the fiscal year '17, which ended in June 30th. And we had a fund balance at that moment of $1,733,253. That was then reduced by $440,000 because we put money into our year '18 budget, which we're living right now. We also dedicated $150,000 from it to go into our capital reserve fund. And so we ended up with an unassigned fund balance of $1,143,253. That is 3.69% of our $31 million budget. What you need to know about fund balances in school districts remain is that we are limited to a 3% fund balance. And if you have an overage of the 3%, you are allowed three years to develop a plan on how you're going to spend it. Our overage is minimal. We have a $214,000 overage. I can tell you that that will be most likely utilized as we move into the next budget year. We would dedicate money to next year's budget, probably more than $214,000. And we also would probably be dedicating money to capital reserve. We certainly have projects where we have a need, and we need to be ready to facilitate those. So I would say to you that our RSHU 22's management of the unassigned fund balance has been well within state guidelines, and also positions us very well to be able to respond in time of emergency, and also support our budgets on a yearly basis. So I hope that synopsis gives you an idea of what it's about, what it's for, and what our position is relative to it. Now, to go down on the page, capital reserve funds are funds that are reserved for long-term capital improvements. And in our RSHU 22, we have some significant expenses that come up that we plan for, and some rather minimal expenses, like each summer we might pay, and we take care of those projects. But a larger one might be a roof. So right now, our balance is $354,217.12 in the capital reserve fund. We also have a secondary capital reserve fund that is for our athletic complex. And as you recall from our discussions about the TURF, that is funded by taking 50% of gate receipts from high school games where we do charge, and putting that into the fund. So right now, we have about $110,000. One thing I do want to clarify about capital reserve, it is required that we have voter approval to transfer funds into a reserve account. And so the second page of this is just showing that when we go to the district budget meeting each year, Article 18 and 19 have presented each year to ask the voters, would you like to put money into our capital reserve? Would you like to put money into our athletic capital reserve? And we have to delineate exactly how much and why we are doing that. Thanks. I'm sitting by you next time. The third item that I put on the page, so these are the two articles that we literally voted on this year. And one thing that came up around the TURF referendum was questions about how we would put money away. And it is certainly possible for these articles that voters could move during the meeting to increase or decrease these amounts. But if amounts are increased or decreased, we have to delineate what we would be using the increase for, or what we would be removing from the list to complete if there was a decrease. So we'll always have to be nimble in those meetings to pay attention to that. This is an article that we've never used. It's just an example. This building that we're in tonight needed to have a new lift, and you can see there's some construction over there, okay? In determining how we were going to pay for that, I needed to talk with legal because this was not a defined expense in our article when we voted for capital reserve. The cost is around $23,000. So if indeed we do need to have capital reserve funds swung over so that we can pay for this, I'll be coming to you as a board and asking this motion to be brought forth so that we can delineate that part of the capital reserve that the voters said, yes, you can put aside, could be used for that project. So that's how it works.
Are capital reserves not capped or governed by the state other than we have to have voter approval, correct?
Exactly. Exactly right. And actually, let's think about that point for a moment. I think we received some feedback during the TURF referendum journey that we probably aren't putting away enough because we have so much deferred maintenance, and so does every other school district. School districts run lean and mean when it comes to budget time, so to put away vast amounts of money is rare. But I do think it's something we need to reflect on going into next year's budget.
But at the same time, you were under a microscope by our current or former town manager that every line item had to be spelled out, there would be no slush fund money. And so to walk around with money in a savings account, we were getting criticized for that. But then the flip side of it, when we do have a capital expenditure, well, where's that money going to come from? And so in this situation, it was more practical to employ a referendum or a bond issue as opposed to try and save the money out.
Love that.
So it's not necessarily we didn't plan ahead, it's just more practical and we get less scrutiny because we're not stuffing money under the mattress. We're saying, this is an expense, we're going to pay it out in reverse as opposed to saving up for it.
That's a good summary.
Can you tell me, Reagan, what paving projects, if any, are planned for? Because selfishly, I was really hoping the parking lot from a bra.
Okay. So this article that you're looking at was what we had at our district budget meeting last year, last June. So these projects were actually already completed in June or July or August last year. So the paving projects were the Reeds Brook Park Back Parking Lot, and there was a small area over on the HA campus that we needed to do. Now, coming up for the next year, I hear you advocating for the Maghra.
It's horrendous, and I think a group of Maghra parents would join outside of the central office and pick it for a new parking lot.
It's already, it's already in art. I mean, Alan can talk to him, he's the chair of the building committee. That's part of what has gone to the state, because it's not $50,000 worth of pavement, it's $500,000 project. We can't do that. We can't just put a little bit of pavement down. So it's, it's in our plan.
Brings a coal bench?
What's that?
Brings a coal bench?
It's mud season, that's. I will say that whether the Maghra project being scored and us getting information back will be telling to us about what we should invest in now and what we should intentionally.
I know, because it was part of the whole traffic plan.
And we should be hanging on that hopefully in the next maybe four to six weeks.
And we should be hanging on that hopefully in the next maybe four to six weeks.
Oh, good.
It should be. Should.
All right, I'll just run through a few updates for you. We do have the request for proposals posted in both the Kennebec Journal and the Bangor Daily News for the TURF and the lighting, they're separate requests. So we posted those on Tuesday, so we're looking forward to those returns. The Reeds Brook roof is in progress, and we're pleased that people are out. I'm sure the snow coming is going to affect that a bit, but we're pretty well poised to be complete. The lift at McGrath, you're seeing right here in action. And we will be having a school garden move for Reeds Brook, and we'll be in the planning to get that done as the spring rolls in. And then lastly, I just wanted you to know that in the funding formula, there's an expectation that schools are moving toward regionalization. And RSU 22 is participating with 13 other school districts to attempt regionalization in four areas. Each district will be required to select two areas in which they participate. But one of the areas that we're working hard on, and RSU 22 is helping to take the lead to get this coordinated, is with food service purchasing. So RSU 22 is already involved in a Dirigo Alliance food purchasing network, and we're bringing that to the districts that may not have been involved with that yet. And I'd like to thank Kathy Kiderich because she's helped a lot to help get the connections so that this regionalization option will work. We'll also be seeing regionalization around special education certification options to help get more people certified for those positions. An educational leadership academy for principal development.
That's coming up later in the agenda.
Okay. And I will say that's going well for us. And transportation, we don't have any reports, things will be going well.
Well, I do want to let you know that we have been informed by the VZ School Committee that they will be taking their business services back from RSU 22, back to the VZ School Department. That's a loss of revenue of approximately $25,000. I'm very disappointed by that. Twenty-five doesn't sound much, does it? But when you take twenty-five for the last five years, that's $125,000 that moving forward five years, we will not have. So I'm very disappointed. I understand why they're doing it, and I'm very disappointed, so we wanted to alert you that.
So that's $25,000 in extra revenue, correct?
Yes.
Is there any part-time or full-time positions that are also funded through that?
Yes, there are. So what, Regan and I, and we'll report later on this one, but Regan and I are going to be taking a look at some potential modifications in central office. And I would say maybe right now, just to kind of whet your appetite, maybe trying to move to a more HR, human resource department. Some of the board members have been on this board for four or five years, we've talked about that a number of times. And now there's an opportunity maybe where we can do that. Specifically, Wally, Penny Robichaud's position before the VZ was .5, it went to 1 because the VZ paid for it. So if you look at the perfect world, if we didn't change anything, she presumably would get back to a .5. The other three or four ladies in my office received a stipend because they did some minor roles with VZ, they'll lose that stipend. So the position that you're thinking about would be the .5 of Penny Robichaud currently. Okay, Regan, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Wally.
Questions for board members? Any update on the FOIA request, or is that on the FOIA request?
Yes, sir. Yes, there is. In fact, I just responded to the District Attorney General's Office yesterday. The person making the request has removed about 50% of the request, most notably in which was most time-consuming, approximately 45 hours, was the purchase orders for six months. They're no longer requesting that. So the price tag, if you remember, I started at 8,100, and then went down to 67. The price tag now is $965.21 approximately. Number one. Number two, the other thing that the person wanted initially was a more comprehensive assessment of payroll. Now the payroll will be what Alan and Heath signed the payroll ledger, if you will. So they moved away from the specificity to more of a global perspective, so less time. So basically, payroll, gate receipts for three years, that's the most time-consuming one. Payroll, gate receipts for three years, and some other minor things, which I think came up to something like 27 hours as compared to 65 where we were when we started three or four months ago. I sent that to the Attorney General's Office yesterday, I have not heard back from her yet, and I told her, I'm receiving $965.21, we'll move forward.
And what would be the time, would that reduction in information requested? What would the time like?
I still said six to eight weeks. Because I said in my overview, I said, we're asking a lot for these people on top of their day jobs. By the way, we're developing a budget, and by the way, we started negotiations.
This is all the information that's audited every year by third party that we have known until...
That's correct. That's correct.
Just going to like think, well, it will support what we already know theoretically, although we also know that the messaging is up to the messenger, so.
Six to eight weeks is a reasonable response. I mean, it's... They were unnerved by that initially, don't they? Just so you know.
Well, what I'm saying is that lots of government agencies take a lot off.
Particularly, that's right, but particularly with things that are facing us the next four to six weeks in this district. And Regan and I alluded to it, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to start announcing publicly the budget for the first time. We've had negotiations sessions that are moving forward that you hear about later tonight, so it's along on our plan right now. So that's what the update is right now.
Any other questions?
There was a delay of 30 minutes on bus tickets in Camden, was that due to the light turn?
Yes.
Can you move it out of the schedule picture? None of them are still looking.
Yes, yes, still, yes. We are. Still looking. Those are going to be hard positions and stuff. And Will, I anticipate in the next probably month, month and a half, we'll receive another resumes. Since this time of year, we will receive, obviously, we're seeing two tonight.
Sergeant Stewart speak Spanish?
Does Sergeant Stewart speak Spanish? You want to be a part-time Spanish teacher?
You don't want me to.
We'll move on to committee reports. Heath's not here, Alan, Jessica.
We went over the... Just went over here, the warrant articles, where we were standing.
You got Jessica?
Okay, sorry. Oops. All right, so we went over the warrant article summary review, we talked about the tuition students.
Yeah, we started doing a resume or a review of resumes. First time I've ever done that. And we turned funding to... Just had to update where we're at. There was a discussion right about, we might not, we might be looking to actually borrow later in the year, it might be more advantageous for non-borrowing right now. If you use a short-term, it's just only a first.
Can I add that? We have grant applications out, and we need to have the time in order to receive, potentially receive, funding back from those grants. And the main bond bank timeline may not allow us enough lead time. So we would take a bond anticipation note, and we would ask for our approval for the main bond bank to be deferred for the November funding. And we're certainly, we're giving ourselves a timeline up until April 1st, because we may hear back from grants, and it will all be okay, and we can set the ask from the bond bank at a lower amount.
And if you, by doing that, there's certain grants you get, if you borrow the money from the bond bank in April and you got some grants, you can't prepay. You borrow the money, you're stuck with the interest, but a set payment stays.
So the grants are specific for the TURF?
Yeah, that's the other issue. If you keep borrowing the money and they got the grants, you might not be able to accept them, because you couldn't use them for business.
We also talked about the VZ audit that's coming up. So that will be held March 12th or the 14th. So they're just coming in and talking, looking over our proceedings.
Yes, and that has been set for the 14th.
And then revenue and payroll benefit projections as well. We talked a little bit about that. Can we ask about that?
Okay. Budget, it sounds like we'll hear more soon.
Yes.
Athletic committee?
We haven't, we haven't been in, that is scheduled for next week.
Building committee? Anything?
No, no.
Negotiations, I think we're going to discuss that.
We will tonight, in the second session.
Education?
Yeah, we met right before this meeting. We spent the majority of our time discussing, talking about the K5, the administrator brought forth, and was discussing perhaps, looking into transitioning from a quarterly reporting report card to a trimester. Which I fully admit, I didn't understand why we would do that, and now I absolutely do. They have some very valid points. If we were to switch from a quarter to a trimester, what it would do is allow teachers to have more time instructing rather than doing those assessments in order to have the quarterly reports go out, as well as really give them more time to get to know the students and make sure that they're in those garden targets. Before we report out, jump in when I put your, what, the message? Uh, 24 days.
See, I think the point was, the first quarter...
It would move the educational component from 45 days, which we currently have in a quarter, to 60 days. Did you want to jump in?
Well, I was going to say, when you asked me to jump in, I think the big point was was that the first quarter grading hasn't given enough time for the teachers to really give an idea of, you know, where the students at, which are going to be younger years. And so that's why we really wanted to turn it into a trimester.
Yeah, so it would allow more time for assessment, it would also allow some relief for some of the teachers. The report cards is a lot of work to put together, and some of that time would be better spent preparing lessons and preparing to educate our students. I think, for me, the big takeaway is, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't really impact any of the education that the students are receiving, it's really purely a reporting mechanism. So it would just change the timing of when they'll receive the report. That being said, the plan is to reach out to the parents and send out a little survey for the next report cards to identify any concerns that parents might have with us.
So would that be K to 5 only, or would that be K to 12?
It would be K to 5 only right now, because, Dawn?
Well, because right now, most trimesters are K8, K5 or K8 because of the way the high school is structured. So, right now, we're just looking at it, maybe piloting it, seeing how parents accept it, and then perhaps expanding it if that's something we choose to do.
Parents love changes.
Right.
It brings up an excellent question, though. Putting my early dig in here now, at the high school level, in that we report out quarterly with the same concerns of that really early picture at the beginning of the year. I would really like to think about and process a semester report. So we looked at a first semester and a second semester, really wouldn't change anything academically, but what it would do is it would give us more of a sense of where a student is along the way. With our transparency we have currently, with our open grade book, with the transparency we have with communication, I think we can build some things in that would help us do that a little bit better. But, I mean, we're working in an age where, bang, I can get it now, I can get it now. So if we send a report card home, that may be inaccurate in two days. So to be able to do something that we have a true close, we don't have any courses that are less than a semester. So it really is a potential move for us, looking down the road.
So there will be more to come, we'll look forward to receiving some feedback as the next report cards go out. Another thing, we just briefly looked at the strategic plan, one of the things the education committee has tried to do this year, which we hadn't done in years past, is really follow the strategic plan and allow that to guide our, the work that we do in the education committee. So every few months, we've just kind of re-looked at it and made sure that we're still on track, which we are, we're very much working on things specifically that were assigned to the education committee with the strategic planning meetings. And then we closed just talking about proficiency-based education, and Mary was not there, and I don't, we didn't know of any updated legislation for proficiency-based education. But we did have a small conversation about, over the past several years and ongoing now, we have taken a stance that proficiency-based education for our district was the right direction to go in regardless of what legislation was enacted, and we're still at this moment on that course.
And speaking of Mary, I do want to let you know that Mary's not feeling well. And Regan and I are comparing her to slow down a little bit, maybe take some time off. She's trying to get in to have an MRI, she's having some various significant issues with her shoulder. It took her like two or three weeks to get Anthony Blue Crossman Shield to finally today approve the MRI. So she's been under a lot of stress and significant discomfort, so that's why she wasn't... So just so you know that. Is that all of it?
That is it, thank you.
Thank you. Policy committee, we've got some policies to break forward, anything else you want to add, John?
Just that in the future, when we update regulations or review ones, they're going to be distributed in a packet for information purposes.
Yes, thank you. A lot of that. UTC?
There hasn't been a meeting since the last board meeting. I did attend the Skills USA competition last Friday. The UTC holds the state skills competitions for the entire state. It was a pretty busy one. There were so many things, I saw it, I didn't remember them all together. Competitions near every area of that building, whether it's small engine cars or the auto body, you know, electrical, cockery car. I went upstairs and watched a cake decorating competition. There's all kinds of stuff, culinary areas.
Did you get to judge any of the cake decorating?
I didn't, I couldn't stay there. For example.
I want to thank Bill for sharing the HJ student success at that event, because they had great success.
I saw that, was out on Western Ave, too, on the marquee.
They put it on the sign. Actually, a little bit of feedback from Paramhill, the administrator at UTC. Some of those students that, I think we had five who received gold medals, scored extremely high. So not just they got the golden, but extremely high. So really excited for their potential as they go to the nationals in, I think it's...
Kentucky.
Kentucky, yes. Thank you.
Speaking of nationals, if you saw the marquee, and we're going to meet them at the next board meeting in April, the robotics team is going to, one of our revised teams is going to be in the national competition again. Remember the last year, we had two teams. This year, we have one team going to the nationals. You'll meet them next month.
I have to say, on the HJ Facebook page, you do a fantastic job of recognizing all the students and teams, especially with basketball, hockey. You've done a great job.
Behavior review committee, we met recently, we're meeting again Friday, one of our... Education Foundation, I still don't think we have a board member representing.
We do not, to my knowledge, no.
If anyone has an interest, let us know. Spruce?
We'll be meeting again, I believe, the end of this month or the beginning of April.
Wellness committee, we just set up a meeting for a couple of weeks. Community relations?
Yeah, we met last night. We went over the TURF referendum result and discussed ways that we can improve our communications moving forward, just questions like that. We had a great discussion about the possibility of an RSU 22 app, something that would be mobile device-based. Nate Savage gave us a very good, relatively short introduction to the idea, and we started considering what kind of things would we be interested in having in an app. Nate has some vendors that are working him over to try and get business from RSU 22. They're going to start coming in and actually giving presentations to the community relations committee, so we can start talking about that. And Amanda had actually sent me Bangor's app, that Bangor school district uses, and quite some time ago, it looks pretty cool. It looks really cool.
I wanted to refer to, just to clarify.
Do we have any students that have any interest in writing?
I think when you look at it from that perspective, I think the writing tends to be more of a web-based, and so we're looking at integrating with all kinds of systems that we currently use, like our Instant Alert, our student information system, which would require pretty intense coding. So we're looking for more than just a web interface. And I think that's why we need to reach out to a vendor. I have thought about that, Paul.
Yeah, we had a discussion about that early on, actually, almost when the community relations committee started. We talked about the idea of possibly getting some students invested in doing that, but the level... the level of integration that you would need is, is pretty intense and it would be a very difficult thing for students to accomplish unless they had some significant time and resources. We also talked about the national lockup and response, which we've heard about here, and we talked about spring communication issues. So a lot of what community relations tries to do is to be ready for whatever the next thing is that is going to be coming up. Budget is obviously the big thing. We discussed talking to opinion makers in local communities. Everybody knows, you know, there's some guy in every community that is the go-to person for a lot of people. It usually ends up being, you know, whoever happens to be fire chief in town or something like that. And so we talked about having conversations with people who are opinion makers in different towns about budget and sort of how it, what, what do your tax dollars buy in schools? Trying to get that idea, making that connection between taxes paid for these things instead of just the schools. Because the school is kind of vague, you know, nobody knows exactly what it is. We talked about the work Regan has been doing in schools, sort of with interschool budget explanation talks and taking that outside of the school and doing that with community groups perhaps, something along those lines. And I really liked the idea of having the review of the strategic plan. That was not something that we have been doing, but having community relations touch upon that in our next meeting, I think it'd be a really good idea to say, are we doing the things that the strategic plan envisioned need to be done? And I don't know that the community relations committee may have been tasked with things specifically in that plan, but still, there are things that we could be helping with. Did I miss anything? Community relations, people who were there? No, good.
Policy considerations?
Yep, so the first one's a regulation. This is for second reading and adoption, but there were no changes in just J I H R. No changes from the first reading, so the committee's seeking motion for second reading and approval.
How do we do it as a slate?
Well, we can't do it because we have some minor changes in the other two.
Make the motion, we approve regulation J I H dash R. Questions, search students? Questions, discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
The next one, reporting child abuse and neglect, J L F. We did make one addition under definitions, letter A, and we took it right from the statute. You can see it actually there in blue, there was any packets there, but basically saying we also have to make reports to DHHS if we're aware of a child that's not living with a child's family for longer than six months. So we know that. So that was, we didn't have that in there and so we put that in. So that's a small change from the first reading. So this would be also seeking motion for second reading and adoption with that change.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'd like to thank Kelly O'Brien, she's with us as guidance council, she's done a nice job with that. Thank you, Kelly.
Is there a possibility that we could have an overview of what broke down in Sears Court and how, how, how the teachers, the young girl, how her, how her experience in the school?
I wonder if it might be better to have maybe a presentation by guidance and admin on the process of maybe how our district identifies issues with students and then how it gets to the point of reporting. I know in policy committee, we had a lot of discussion about the process and whose role it is to do what.
At Sears Court, we don't really know what happened because Sears Court isn't saying and the Department of Health and Human Services isn't saying. So we just don't know.
Okay, but it might be good to cover what, what are we doing in our district?
Like what, how we report and how, where does it go from there?
We can do that, yes. So, no doubt.
The next one, homebound destruction, I H B F. Again, small update from the first reading. Instead of just saying a physician, we actually included also a license provider. So with that, also seeking approval, motion for second reading and adoption.
Any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And then we do have the adjustment?
Yep. This is a policy that we're looking for motion for approval for first reading and it's policy, I N B, controversial issues policy. And we had a very long discussion about this last night and it was a very good discussion. We had a lot of ideas and suggestions that came to us, but the committee really kind of, we stuck with what we see here, we read and felt like this was the best, the best, best way to go. So with that.
Well, we did make some changes to the original.
But this is still first reading.
This is just first reading.
I think the other thing I'd highlight, John, in addition to this, we also reference a number, a number of other policies that have a correlation to this, exemption from obstruction, for example, things of that nature.
So seeking motion for first reading, so moved.
Second.
Any questions?
You got it first.
Any questions on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Joe.
Next is all business. We do need to set up an ad hoc committee for evaluation of superintendents. The current tool that we have is in your packet. The ad hoc committee has redone the evaluation. I still have a few more tweaks that I haven't got to wrap up and finish yet to send out to share, but we are going to use this tool because that's what Rick has been expecting and basically here on. Are there any members that would like to be on that ad hoc committee with me to do the evaluation?
So this would be creating a new-
Nope, this is, so we're going to, everyone has the, the evaluation, all board members, we expect it to complete the evaluation and then this committee will look at the evaluation, compile the data and then we'll have an executive session and then we'll meet with Rick.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Deadline for getting the, is it in policy that the deadline? End of March?
Yes. I'd say you should have these completed, these back to Wally by the end of this month. I think we meet, now that we're meeting monthly, that actually will push that up to May, Karen. Exactly right. So Wally will compile it, bring it to the board in the April meeting and then we'll, I'll meet with the committee and we'll bring it back with me in May. That's correct.
Sweet. John and- Yeah, and with the change in, hopefully the change in evaluation tool, we will be looking at the policy to, to make some changes to the policy. So Karen and John, or Amanda and John, anyone else has an, have an interest in being on that?
The committee that had our first issue-
Thank you, Jane. Why don't we, maybe if we can look at having evaluations back maybe by Friday, the twenty-third of March? And then I'll get with the three of you and maybe we'll see about trying to meet the last week of March.
And last year we switched that because some board members were uncomfortable sending that to the central office, so it was sent to the vice chair. So I think we should send, we should send, so send that to Wally.
If you do it electronically, email it to me. If you do it on paper, let me know. I can figure a way to get the, the paper from you.
Is it electronic version? Is this one that's not that?
This one's PDF.
PDF.
I can have Lori send that.
There, I think in the past Lori has sent out, type on, I'll do that, we could do-
Yeah.
Well, now, no.
Now, now the page is like-
So moved.
I'll do my best.
We'll move on, we are running short on time. New business, discuss and act on participation in the Southern Scott Regional Program.
Yes, Amanda alluded to this at our last meeting and Regan alluded to it tonight. I think this is a great opportunity. It was built on the spirit of partnership but also school management leadership. I think we should be very excited and embrace this with a strong support. I'd recommend you, actually, the motion needs to be read over here, I'm sorry. Motion for the school board's approval of this patient. If I may ask something to read down, please. Amanda, you'll do that, you can involve me.
I'm just motion that the board authorize this and approves the elucidation of RSC twenty-two in the Southern Scott Regional Program for children with exceptionalities, part two application to be approved as the school management and leadership center pursuant to twenty-a MRS chapter one, two, three, with the intent that upon the commission of education's approval of the part two application, that the board shall vote to approve an intra-local agreement and cooperative agreement that are consistent with the intra-local agreement submitted with the part two application.
So moved.
Could you repeat the middle part of that? Stolen thunder.
Any questions? All in favor?
Thank you. That's a great, great opportunity. Discuss and act on first reading of the eighteen-nineteenth school calendar.
Yes, so hopefully it's pretty self-explanatory. This is a first reading. You can see that that does start prior to Labor Day. Just to remind all board members, but particularly new board members, we have to be in compliance within five days with the United Technologies Center. That's another guiding principle here. It's pretty much laid out with a similar structure this year with the early dismissal days and I think it's pretty much set with a hundred and seventy-six student days, three storm days built in. So I'd ask for your approval for first reading.
Does UTC start before or after?
They're starting after Labor Day.
So why don't we start after Labor Day?
Well, that's a good question. We had a number of drafts. We had some people that are advocating to start after Labor Day. I brought all those drafts to the administrative team and we felt strongly that starting before Labor Day would be best, even though it's only two days. Starting after Labor Day, we'd push it out later in June, we'd change our traditional graduation dates and we just felt, all things considered, Joe, this is a better option.
Because it seems to me that late August is usually very hot and mid-June isn't. It just seems to me like it's really uncomfortable being in classrooms and in terms of actual activity getting done, I think it's going to be minimal for the Labor Day. I mean-
We had the same conversation with respect to going to school on June seventeen, eighteenth as well. Where, where's the, where's a sense of excellence in education, whether in the latter part of August or the middle of June, so?
Yeah, and the other thing I will add, just when, if you start, have two days, it kind of gets everyone acclimated. So when they come back, when you come back after Labor Day, you are ready to really move and you're not starting, like you come back on a Tuesday, so you've got, say, Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday to kind of get your feet wet. You, you did that the days before, before Labor Day, you do kind of all those procedural things and then when that day starts on Tuesday after Labor Day, you move forward and you're, you're on offense. It really is a very nice way to do it.
Do you?
I, for the past four years, I've always said it should be after Labor Day. As a parent, that's in my vacation. I worked all summer, I won't be able to take my kids, I don't want them to have to miss school. I don't care if they miss school, but I'd rather they didn't because especially when they're just getting in and they're making friends and they're getting acclimated, I think that you're stealing their summer from them. Give them, give them July eighteenth, give them June twentieth, that's not really summer. The end of August is summer. That's my recommendation and ultimately by administration's decision, I guess, but as a board, we have to approve it.
Ultimately, ultimately, you need, ultimately, you need to endorse it. So if you, if it's the consensus of the board and you'd like to see a draft reflective of starting after Labor Day, then I can do that.
Well, I mean, I think that it's a late Labor Day, that's one thing. This is an early Labor Day. I mean, do we want to ask the community relations committee to see if we get any impact from the community?
Well, we've surveyed, all, all the building principals have asked teacher input and you can well imagine the inputs all over the place.
What if parents think, we have, we have that avenue for information now?
We could.
I, I think we're on a, we're on a probably a little bit of a tighter timeline right now to be able to put out a survey and ask questions, but maybe in the future at some point-
I'm always saying that for four years, maybe in the future, this is, so I, I think, I, I personally think it should be after Labor Day, especially where it's not a late Labor Day.
Yeah, I move we start off, I mean, I move that, we ask you to reconsider.
Is that their consensus?
Mr. Tracy, do I have Mr. Tracy, yeah?
Just for a second. If we go after Labor Day, and again, we can't predict our winter whatsoever, but we have to have so many days with our seniors. So by starting even the two days before Labor Day gives us a little bit of a cushion to guarantee that most likely that graduation day, which I think is a June ninth or something like that, is, is the date that would be good. Otherwise, we're looking at now June sixteenth as a potential graduation day. So even that, as a two week into, nine days into June versus a two week into June, is a huge difference for our students and it typically is not the day that we've used. It's usually that second.
But we don't have to extend the school year, we can extend the school day. So just because we have a snow day doesn't mean we automatically go. I mean, stay, stay an hour later for five days, boom, there's your extra day.
Well, we talk about educationally sound decision-making and while I get that that makes sense, you have students that definitely participate in athletics for us, which would mean that they still have to meet travel times and they'd still have to worry about practices and, and games and that would mean we'd ask them to leave school earlier and miss more classes, which I don't think would-
Yeah, the point I'll note here, I'm not advocating, but I'll note, we go a hundred and seventy-six days, we can roll that back to one seventy-five, but that was a desire of the board to, just as a point of information.
So at this point, we have Joe's motion to move the first day of school after Labor Day. Do we have a second?
Wait, wait, the motion was to post call.
I think the motion was for you to take, you know, reconsider and come back with-
Do we have a second on that motion? So now this is the time for discussion. Is there any other discussion or do we ought to move forward with a vote on that?
The only thing that I would say, discussion on this, is that you are much more productive the two days in August than you are the two days in June. Much more. You're going to get a lot of exposure and you can have, you can have hot, 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 hot days the middle of September where you don't even want to turn the lights on because it's so hot in the building. That would not, that would not change, that would not change at all.
I would like to say, I, I get it. So as a parent, yes, I want my vacation, I would love for schools to be very convenient for my schedule, but I think I have to trust the administrators that put a lot of thought into this and about education and keep that in effect.
Thank you, Amanda. Why don't we move forward with vote, those in favor of moving forward the motion for the, to reconsider? Those in favor? Those opposed? Do we have a motion on the school calendar as is? As a first reading? As a first reading?
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, can I ask, you said you quickly do one seventy-five, do you do one seventy-six just so more classroom time? I mean, what's-
Teacher, the teacher year is one eighty-four, so you could go another teacher day versus a student day, bring the student days from one seventy-six to one seventy-five, that's an option. I'm not advocating-
I was just, I was just curious because we always use four snow days.
Years ago, we went, we went to school a hundred and seventy-eight days at one time. We had a hundred and seventy-eight student days.
What are, what are the students required to have?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
Is it, so this is your first reading?
Yes.
So if we, if we vote on this now, it's only first reading-
It'll come back, that's correct.
It'll come back?
Yep.
Is it, I don't know how much time it takes to put these together, so I don't want to suggest that you spend time that isn't going to be valuable if it's a lot of time, but I've never seen the calendar that starts after Labor Day.
We did it a couple, few years ago, I think.
It's been done before, Scott. Actually, Joe reminded me because depending on where Labor Day is, earlier or later, we made some adjustments over my career. Yes, it's been done.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it hasn't been, but I mean, in the three years that I've been on the board, I don't-
Most reflective of that, that's correct. That's why Tony's bringing up that, he's, you know, we've talked about this and that and that.
Yeah, I mean, Tony brings it up almost as much as John Coggeshall brought up, you know, his math.
Once a year, I bring it up.
But I mean, I, so I guess, I would like, I'd like to see, like, I didn't, I don't, I didn't want to not do the first reading on this because we are in our timeline where we have to get this done. This is the way I'd summarize it, given your limited time. The administrative team discussed this after input from most of our buildings. We decided that we would go with what we have tonight. If you're asking me to reconsider that, I can take it back to the team in our next meeting and bring it back to them and then we'll see what is reflected in the- And then we'll see what is reflected in the second presentation, in the second draft. If you want to see that. It's a conversation to see where we reached consensus, Scott.
I guess my issue is I don't want to do it for curiosity's sake. Because then you're talking a lot of work for curiosity, and I, and that's where I am. So maybe, you know, I understand that Tony would like to have it done this time.
I'd like to know where it is.
But maybe, you know, we did a survey at the beginning of the year, this year, the Community Relations Committee did, to find out some information about where people were. Beginning of the year would actually be a great time to ask this question, you know, to put that out.
What I would suggest is, taking the minutes here, we did just have a vote to move on the reading that was brought to us because the reconsideration was voted down, right? So why don't we bring back the drafts for your information so that you can see the different steps that we took? We have those.
And I think as well, we have most.
Good information to lead into the next.
Yes, we have all of them.
And I think.
They've heard our discussion, yeah, so.
No, I've butted in, but I'm all for surveying the community and having community input, but I also think we have to be careful what we ask and then what we deliver. You know, if we ask a question and then we don't deliver, then why?
With such expectation.
And I really truly respect hearing Bill's perspective, and the community is not willing to hear that. So I think we really need to be thoughtful about the opportunities to take.
I think I also appreciate Jane's input as a teacher, retired teacher.
Well, we started after Labor Day.
Is there any principal that wanted to make a comment that you're thinking of right now to accentuate any key points you're hearing? Any folks? You don't have to, but I just want to make sure of the opportunity.
I would say open mindingly at weathering for the very reason that Jane stated, that two days to get ready before a full week. It was optimal for three through five, so that absolutely was a resounding voice.
It's not going to be a whole week without four days.
That's even better.
What I mean is the week that you start. If you started after Labor Day, it's not going to be a week, it's going to be four days.
That's even better because you're getting kids acclimated to getting back to school, so you get two days, four days, then five days.
But it's not like that. And this is a lot of the resentment I get from the parents and I resent. It's like they go back to school and then all of a sudden, oh, we've got like five Fridays where they have teacher in service and they're not going to school. Well, take those two Fridays, put them before Labor Day, let me have vacation with my kids. That's, that's what I hear when I talk to people, like, you're on the board, why are we going back at four Labor Day? Well, because we have to. Well, then why are they taking, taking two or three Mondays or Fridays off in October and November? Why didn't we put those days at the beginning of the year, let the kids have their summer vacation instead of giving them three-day weekends once they're going to school?
So I think we've had a lot of discussion on this. We do have 12 minutes and then we've got a vote at the stem meeting and we still haven't got an executive session. So I believe we'll forward the votes.
Well, it's still a discussion.
I'm just saying you're moving it along, but I mean, this is discussion and people still have to get input. And that's why we've been doing this for four years. Even before you got on the board, I brought this up. And just, oh, well, we'll do it next year, we'll look into it next year. Well, now we're going on four years, looking into it next year. I think we need to get the community's input because they're the ones paying taxes.
So is, we are in discussion, is there any new themes that we need to talk about? If not, I think we should move forward for a vote.
I think there needs to be a community servant. I think we should get their input. Yeah, we might not act on it, but I mean, people come up to me in the grocery store, that's why we're on the board. We're not in a bubble, we're not just taking administration's input. We are here to serve the people that put us on the board. And right now, we're acting like we're in a bubble, admin's telling us one thing, we're going to act on that. Well, it's not just admin's input, it's all the people that voted us on the board. We are forcing their input. So we need to open up that bubble and take what the community has to say and find the one. Is that reasonable?
So can we just either look at the calendars and look at the highlights?
Basically, basically what you would do if you didn't change the in-service days, you'd then extend your two days into June. The in-service days, we've planned those strategically, use the alignment with assessments, usually we coordinate with U T C. For example, March 8th is assigned to U T C skill competition they have. We actually even, just to give an extreme, believe it or not, we had one time, it's common for many school districts now to have early dismissals or late entries once a week. We discussed that, that doesn't appear here. For example, my daughter's school district, every Wednesday afternoon, every Wednesday, they dismiss at noon time and have in-service the rest of the day, every week.
There is one detail that hasn't been brought up yet, and that is high school athletics. I just would like to represent that high school athletics is, of course, very active starting on about August 15th. So there is considerable number of students on multiple teams in the fall that are back basically at school up to two to three hours a day. And so I think we were also thinking that we have a lot of kids back on campus. I realize that's a nine through 12 effort, not necessarily K.
Third, though, because the academy is, what, 700 students out of 23, and all 700 students aren't in athletics. So you're down in the, what, 300, maybe two or 300 athletes to get the tail wagged and off. 200 athletes coming back for fall sports does not need to dictate K through eight.
The other thing I can do, I can bring you two drafts. I can bring you the draft here, I can bring you the draft showing after Labor Day, then you weigh in, we'll decide which one we prefer.
So we still have to approve this for first reading?
You can approve it first.
We have a motion and we have a second.
You can approve it, now you can back.
Finish with all the discussion.
That's correct.
But we need a motion.
There's no commitment, it's just a first reading.
We have a motion. Yes, so it's already a motion and then it's a second. Now this is the discussion, John.
Now, what was the motion for?
To approve as a first.
John, was it you that motioned?
To approve this as first reading.
First reading.
And then there's discussion, okay, now there's a vote.
We did take a vote, though. We have, we voted on Joe's.
We voted on Joe's motion.
We voted on a consideration of.
Those in favor of approving for first reading? Anyone opposed?
So just to clarify, in our next meeting, I'm going to bring you back two drafts, the one you see here and a draft reflective of starting after Labor Day.
And I would like to hear the academic implications.
So our administrative team is sitting here, so we'll be doing that.
And Scott, could you add that to a future agenda item for Community Relations?
To, in terms of the taking, yeah, when we do our survey, putting together our survey questions for the beginning of next year. That would be something we can discuss then.
As Rick mentioned, the overview of the Vias survey is postponed.
Next month, right, Brett Nick? Next month, April.
Any community dates, meeting dates that we need to set?
What was the date you had, the 23rd to return the superintendent evaluation?
23rd will be to return the superintendent evaluations.
Got it.
I'll work with the ad hoc committee to set a meeting on the 26th. We do have executive session.
We're going to win the library.
We have six minutes. Do we want to, does someone want to make a motion to extend the board meeting beyond 9:30 so we have more than six minutes to discuss?
To make a motion that we extend the board meeting up to another 30 minutes?
So a second. Those in favor? Anyone opposed? We need a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, we do. Oh, I don't have that.
You have it right here.
That's got to be read exactly.
Yes.
I make a motion in a jerk. I mean, I can, right?
If anyone would like a cup of coffee?